Yeah.
And you all that, you know, all the town forms would be, be the people to, uh, how, or, or, in town would be, be support.
Yeah, they all really, yeah, or not necessarily all really, but I think it's different.
Right, or single people too, for that matter, you know, like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, what's up, man?
You're going to be called.
What was what?
A bomb.
A bomb. Oh, you're doing that?
No.
You're a ten, you're a ten, that's very tense.
I invited a friend to help with that part. Also, there's a person from the organization that we have to help with.
Uh, that's cool. I wonder what's gonna happen Saturday. It's, it's, I feel like next week, so, yeah. Oh, oh, no, no, no. Yeah, no, it's all right.
I was walking through that, I was like, well.
No, I just moved through on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Saturday is off, and movies, what do you, like, know?
I know, it's, it's six, twelve. Start with Friday, yeah.
It's off Friday.
Yeah.
But, uh, uh.
Yeah, I remember. Alright, it's warm. It's kind of like a night.
Uh, after the.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I did it last.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm wondering if you agree. Say hi. So, yeah. Yeah, are you saying the wrong? Hey. Uh. I'll be saying, I'll, 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 yeah. Uh, sure. But we, 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 uh, we, uh, we, uh.
I mean, I guess, we, we. Break out, we should, we should.
Yeah, but, I mean, like now, it's, it's. We were good, making drinks. Yeah. Alright, here's, we're sitting already.
We just put our office, maybe, I think, about, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, it was, yeah, it was decent practice.
Yeah.
Okay. I feel.
Oh, yeah. But, I didn't know. Yeah, it isn't that. I don't know, I'm serious, I'm, I don't know, there's no question. Yeah, I was very, well, I was like, right.
Oh, I think so, man. It's not. Sometimes it's spread. There should go. Uh.
Oh, what is it? I don't know. I'm just seeing, I'm just seeing. Oh, um, sir, I'm, there's no water on the, there's no, there's no, there's no. Yeah, right. The microphone was for, right. There's, there's two, there's, there's. I think you, 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 you. And I just had dogs, uh, when I was, uh, when I was, uh. Do you say there are no, uh, these, these? There are, there's just the two land calls, ones. Okay. But there's not one, I have to look at all, there's, 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 right, so, we're gonna use this mic.
Really long, long. Yeah, I got, that's one. That's one. Four and eight. Third, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah.
So, maybe walk in the door, and, 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 and. You can, you can, you, you, she's talking. I keep, I keep, I keep, I keep.
Yeah, no, I'm doing, I'm, 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 I'm.
So phones off. Try to speak to the subject. Add something new. And instructions for the YouTube participants using the chat box for Q and A. And we have facilitators that will coordinate that information so that it comes back into the room. Little bit about why we have town plans. You may or may not have read Putney's Town Plan. We've had one since 72, I think. We were a relatively early town to adopt the opportunities presented by state law to incorporate planning into municipal governance. And it starts with a town plan. As you can read, that's the general, the general idea about the intent of the plan. We are a state where municipalities can do nothing unless it's enabled by state regulation. So you can do a deep dive into this if it interests you and begin to see the actual, read the actual legislation that defines the goals and intent. This language is basically out of state law, tweaked a little bit and edited, but this is the general idea about why you'd have a town plan. So we've had a number of them. They expire. The date of their expiry has changed over time. The state realized that it's a real challenge for small-town volunteer planning commissions to rewrite a town plan every five years. It then went to six with a sort of freebie year if you wanted it, and now it's eight. So the town plan will last for eight, eight years. And have you had a chance to read that? I don't want to just read it to you, but you've, then take a minute, read the slide.
Is this extracted from another document? Because I notice it isn't in the town plan itself.
The slideshow?
No, this particular screen.
This slide is a slide that's been prepared by Sue using some information from a slideshow prepared by John Bennett at Wyndham Regional Commission. So this is just background information about town plans in Vermont. Nothing specific about our town plan, except that our town plan intent is to address these issues.
You mentioned that we only do whatever the state tells us to do.
We're a Dillon Rule state, Vermont, and municipalities can do only what the state empowers municipalities to do. There's a different model of state governance which says municipalities can do anything except what the state tells them to do. That isn't our model. Yeah, I, I don't know the number, but you know, this is like civics, you know, I, I've heard it, read it, don't remember. A percentage of the states in the U.S. operate under one set of rules, the other percentage operate under the other set of rules. Vermont is following the model of state empowerment to municipalities that requires a state regulation to enable you to have municipal powers. Yep. So this is a significant aspect of having a town plan. Once again, these are powers afforded to the municipality by state law that says, if you're interested in planning, and as you may know, some communities, even in Wyndham County, are not interested in planning. Some may have just a town plan and no zoning, others have no plan at all and no zoning. If you want to have zoning, one of the requirements is that you have a town plan. So that is a significant rationale for, for having a town plan. Also, Act 250 permits are contingent upon a finding that if you do have a plan, the, the decision by the Act 250 Board has to be consistent with it. And Act 248, applications for certificates of public good for the siting of renewable energy facilities, wind and solar, there's an opportunity to have a presence in those determinations if you've addressed some of these issues in your town plan. Locations that are deemed more appropriate than others for renewable energy siting, for instance. And there are a number of grants, both federal and state, that give preference to communities that have town plans and can demonstrate in their plan that there's a linkage to the criteria of the grant. So often there's an opportunity to talk at length about how your town plan is consistent with the goals of the grant. In our enabling legislation, 24 VSA, this is all part of, I mean, Chapter 117, there are goals, there happen to be 14 now, there were maybe eight when I first was on the Planning Commission, and over the years they get tweaked and added, sometimes there are little subparagaths that get added, but as issues come up that are of public importance, they get added to the list of goals. Like referencing to flood resilient communities, that was a post-Irene response. And the state then did a very significant effort to work with the regional planning commissions, who then worked with the local towns, to promulgate and adopt a set of model regulations addressing flood hazards, especially the sort of new awareness of the small stream hazards, which had, aren't typically addressed under the big FEMA, you know, Mississippi River flooding, you know, approach to, to flood management. But the incredible erosion that we saw in Vermont and the other hilly communities with Irene, that initiated a set of regulatory responses, and then it became elevated up to the level of one of the 14 planning goals. So a town plan has to address this either explicitly or by reference. It also has to have 12 elements. It's a very structured response to the state law. Those are the elements which are more like a table of contents, and within those elements you are meant to address the goals, and some of the goals link up very neatly with a section. You know, goals about addressing housing opportunities, you'd expect to see comments about that in the housing chapter of the town plan.
Does P and B stand for policy and program? What does P and B stand for? Do you remember that, Sue?
What that abbreviation was? Policies and programs, yeah. So it's, it's from item number, from line number one. Don't want to get hung up here, you know, this is just to give you a sense that it's a very structured process, and we have to meet a number of, check a number of boxes. You know, so you can be wild with your imagination here, thinking about what a vision might be for the town, but the reality of the town plan might be that in the process of addressing the requirements of state law, some of the nuance may be modified. Our process, like I said, every eight years now. Thank you to the state legislature for giving us a few more years. It's a long process. We've begun it a while ago because we needed to write a grant, try to get a consultant, hire consultants, RFPs, so we've been at this for a number of months, a year at least. And the expectation is to complete this process at the end of the year. And we've got a very tight calendar that doesn't give us much wiggle room because we would like to maintain a, a current plan to have that in effect. So immediately upon the expiration in the end of December of our existing plan, we would, we intend to have gone through the adoption process, have the new one just right there, ready to pull off the shelf and go. There will be public hearings for the Planning Commission when we have a pretty thorough draft. When that gets tweaked based on whatever feedback we get, that goes to the Select Board, and they'll have two public hearings. So lots of opportunity for public interaction. We would hope that if you have some strong engagement in the plan, that you work with us in, in the writing process so that we don't have the situation where we've done a lot of work, we feel like we're on target, and we present it, and someone nixes the whole thing. So we're really inviting you to work with us as we go through this process. And the subsequent community outreach meetings will be topic-specific. This one on vision and the big picture, the next are going to get more into the nitty-gritty and ordeal, specifically with chapters of the town plan. So, you know, please work with us. We also ultimately would like to have this plan approved by Wyndham Regional Commission, and they'll be evaluating it against the 14 goals and make sure that it conformed to the, the 12 sections, that we didn't miss anything. And that's sort of the last check as to whether or not we have an acceptable plan, is we'll get Wyndham Regional Commission approval. Our consultants are working on a plan that is very explicitly designed to show the demonstration with the goals as explicitly as possible. We've always had our plans approved in the past, but we haven't done such an explicit job of linking the goals to the language of our town plan. You can check out the website, PlaySense, the consultants. There is a link on the Town of Putney page, right? That gets you to PlaySense? Yeah, so whatever path you'd like, go to the Town of Putney, somewhere up on the top banner, you'll begin to get the links to the town plan stuff. Because there are services associated with the Town Plan Rewrite that are beyond the capabilities of the Town Hall service, it, it's going to link you to PlaySense, to the consultants, and they have an opportunity there to take feedback from the public, host the documents, the portions of the town plan that are being edited and worked on. So all of that is available there. We will have a mailed survey at some point, we don't have a date, five public meetings to interact with the public during the writing of the plan, open public Planning Commission monthly meetings, and online comments that can be sent to the consultants at the PlaySense And the Vermont Council on Rural Development Group, which is now sort of boiled down to three committees, we intend to coordinate with them and also the other bodies in town that are doing work that sort of falls under this umbrella. We are obligated to follow the Ront Open Meeting Law, and we are doing our very best to comply with this. It's a challenge, especially for collaborative work on a document. I mean, we're, our, our process will be in compliance with open meeting law.
Are the two other designated places known and consistent? The G Store, the library?
You mean where, where warnings are posted?
Yeah, where you put these notices.
Yeah, I, I, I mean-
Town Hall? Yes, it's the Town Hall and two other places. We need to use microphones for the class. We have people asking questions as well.
Hi, I'm Robin, I'm the clerk. So in addition to being on the town website, I try to put notices up in as many places as I can. So generally, they go up at Town Hall, the Post Office, the Library, the Co-op, Rod's, the diner, and the G Store. Sometimes there's not room for all of them, but you should be able to find it always at the, at the, the Post Office, the Library, and Town Hall, obviously. So if you're looking for what's going on, all town notices are there. So just, you know, other committees also put notices up there.
At the Town Hall?
The Library, the Post Office.
The people online can't hear without a microphone.
Did you get it?
Yes.
Okay. The Town of Putney Assistant Administrator is responsible for posting notices, and she has three dedicated spaces, which I think are the G Store, Town Hall, and the Post Office. They're always there. Robin's long list is because Robin is choosing to promulgate information as best as he can. But the obligatory postings are those done by the Assistant Clerk at the Town Hall and at, at those three locations. You also, if you got the access, just go to the Town of Putney website. Between February and July, we will have our five meetings. They'll be posted with the topics as to what the meeting will be about. First Tuesday, and maybe extra meetings as we get into the thick of our town plan writing. Our Planning Commission meetings typically are on the first Tuesday unless there's interference like Town Meeting Day, et cetera. And we will have public hearings, initially a Planning Commission public hearing sometime in late August with a very complete version of the plan, but with an opportunity to have feedback. And then two Select Board hearings. It requires Select Board approval before it's all done. That's the culmination of the process, is the Planning Commission develops it, writes it, has a public hearing, uses that information to tweak it, and it goes to the Select Board. The Select Board has a couple of public hearings, there can be some editing, and at the end of that process, a Select Board hopefully will adopt the town plan. Inviting you to send pictures, comments. I'm being pressed for time. Do you guys, you got it? Questions?
Any, any questions from online?
I think there was really only one significant question about where the postings are done. Were there any other questions that you guys can recall that online might have missed? You asked about Dillon Rule versus, yeah, but in the empowerment of municipalities to, to, in the regulatory process in Vermont. Yeah, okay. You want to talk about this, Sue?
Thank you, Pip. I just have to say, this is the first time for all of us, for you, for the Planning Commission, to try to have this kind of conversation and to do it online. And it's been a mighty effort to try to figure out how to put all the pieces together. And in your packet, you will see not only the agenda that has on the back of it, the vision statement they'll be talking about here in a moment, but there's an additional document that is a post-meeting survey, and we really want your feedback about this meeting because we're doing five more. We're going to be learning from this. But thank you, Pip, for that wonderful presentation. And we do have folks online, we have virtual meeting managers who are talking with them. The online folks can participate by chat, and so their, their feedback will be brought into us by the facilitators for that. So we're going to be breaking out into small groups. We had planned that if, you know, we had 200 people here, we could have a lot of small groups, but we have something like 30 people here, so we're going to break into three small groups. Before we do that, and I'll give you directions for where to go for the three small groups, what we're going to be doing is looking at, as your first content piece for the town plan, is looking at a draft vision and strategic direction statement. So how, what is that in relative to the 14 planning goals that the state requires and the 12 sections that the town, that the state requires? Well, those are requirements, and we have to meet them, but there's also what lives for the Town of Putney and what matters over the next five to eight years. And in fact, we just had a, a very wonderful, big community conversation through the VCRD, Our Future Putney, where we talked about these things. So the Planning Commission wants to build on this kind of thinking and dialogue, and in fact, we had a strategic direction vision in our last town plan, and it just provides a, a high level of how we meet the state goals in a way that meets what we need as a community. So we're trying to do, match those together. So it's very important to begin at the very start, what matters for us? And we are going to throw, put up here in a moment, and you have it on the back of your agenda, a draft statement of vision and strategic direction that would really provide guidance for the rest of the town plan as it's developed. And what we've done is we've looked at the work done through the Our Future Putney project by VCRD, the library survey this summer, which was also looking at what do you want in your community? And we looked at various other documents and said, here's a possible reflection of what people were saying over the past few months about the future of Putney. And we need a statement that will guide us, so let's begin by putting something on paper and getting some feedback on that. And we honestly do need to hear from you about, about that. We'll be asking you in the small groups and including online, what about these draft statements resonate for you? What, what, what fits from your perspective of vision and what we need to do at a, at a high level to achieve that vision over the next eight years? And then, well, then what's missing? When you look at it, you go, but what about this? We want to know what is missing from this that's important to you. We also want to know, what would improve this overall? It might be something different than what's missing. Is there a way to put this together or reference something? Whatever occurs to you. We want to hear what would make it better. And we're going to do some flip chart work or chatroom work on this, and then we're going to come back and ask you, saying, of this feedback that you've heard, what rises to the top? What's most important, do you think, for the Planning Commission to respond to? Well, look at all of it, but, you know, it's good to know what, what really matters most to people, so we can really pay attention to that in particular. We'll look at all of it, of course. So that's going to be our exercise, and for those of you online, we're going to, you're going to be able to come back to this, this slide, but if you could just go to the next slide, please, I will show you the vision statement.
You can click it.
There it is. Oh, I can click it, thank you, but my hands are full. Oh, no, it's, I've got this, thank you. Like I said, we're learning. We'll get this down by the fifth meeting, I'm sure, I promise you. Yeah, you could do that, but I think this is our last slide.
Twenty is our last.
Okay. So this is what we'll be asking you to respond to, and you're going to get some time to reflect on this, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to dwell here long. Everybody online, as well as everybody in the room, will have a chance to reflect on that. But this is what we've put together. My only observation is it's kind of long, but everybody, there's a lot of things that, that people want. When you look at other town plans, there, these kinds of things are usually shorter, but this is what we heard, and this is an expression of it, and we expect that this conversation will shape it even further. So that's what we're working on, and is, okay, go ahead, is there another slide? Yeah, and so you can find materials for those of you online, the vision statement will all be on screen, but you'll be able to see this material online, PlaySense website, as well as the 2023 Town Plan page on the town website. So with that, I, unless there's questions, I want to break us into our three groups so that we can go have these conversations, and if we have a question, we need to have it on the microphone so the folks online can hear it.
Thank you. Yes, it sounds awfully loud.
Greeno, would you say it's Greeno?
Yes, I'm about to. My name is Greeno Nowakowski. I loved seeing the dates in the slideshow. Is the slideshow available? Is tonight's slideshow?
Yes.
We can, we can find it, awesome, thank you.
Yes, this will be posted, this is, this, the same link that we're using for the meeting tonight is, is the link you will use to see it on YouTube, and it'll be available right, you know, by tomorrow, online, so. And in fact, BCTV is likely going to be airing this for us as well, so it'll be available on YouTube and then get on the schedule for BCTV. Any other questions otherwise, in the back here?
I wonder-
Wait, wait, let's get the microphone so that the folks online can hear your question.
And Laura, please tell us your name.
Okay, thank you, I can't, there's a bright light, so it's hard to see.
Oh, it's the only bright light in the audience. I found it. Laura Campbell, and I was wondering if you could back up just one slide. Is that possible?
Yes.
Because that vision is what we're going to be meeting about in our breakout groups, right?
Right, and you have it in paper form, it's on the back of the agenda that you got today?
Thank you very much.
So, yes. We're providing, it's a multimedia presentation. We're very sophisticated. Any other question? Was there another hand up? Great, okay, because this gives us the time we need in our small groups. I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're now going to turn this into three groups? Oh, Vanessa says four groups? Okay, we're going to do four groups, and we're going to do a couple upstairs and a couple downstairs so that we can give people as much space for the conversations as possible. So group number one, which is facilitated by Vanessa, is going to be behind here in the green room, the behind the stage. If you haven't been behind the stage, this is your chance. Now, how many noses did you count, Vanessa? Are we 30?
I think if it's four groups, we're in the-
Seven?
Five to six per group.
Okay, all right, good, all right. And then, Andrew?
I was going to say, many of us showed up, this is just to you, you may want to say it. Many folks seem to have showed up with friends, neighbors, or family, and maybe it would be encouraged that you try to split up your-
Oh, good.
... themselves into a variety of groups.
So Andrew was suggesting that try to form the groups in a way that you're sitting with people that you may not talk with every day, you know, somebody you might not know as well, so try to, to break out into those groups. Thank you, Andrew.
You could do the technically approach, which is you count off.
We're going to count off, those of you online, it's not important for you to know how they count off, we're not going to pass the mic around for that, but-
You go one, two, three, four, you remember your number, you're one, three.
Thank you, Pip. All right, let's start with Emily.
One.
She's a facilitator. Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, one.
You give us everyone one.
One, two, three, four. One.
Okay, one, two, three.
Two.
Three, four.
Where are we at?
One, two, three, four, one, two, three, one, two.
Great, so remember your number. And all the ones will go with Vanessa to the green room. Let's see, we'll do one up here, this is, what, is this two here? Andrew?
Yeah.
Okay, so group two will be here, and Andrew, I think, are you the facilitator for that? And then we're going to go downstairs to what is known as Group Five setup, and that's going to be Eileen's group, that is where the couches are downstairs, and that'll be another group. That group will be closest to the cookies, the coffee, and the tea, I just have to say. And then the fourth group will do, Rod?
Back up. Three, Group Three is downstairs?
Yeah, Group Three, it, it will, it says Group Five down there in that, because we, we set up, we set up seven, but the third group will look like number five down there. Don't be fooled.
That was confused.
Yes, of course, I think that was confusing. And then the last group that's downstairs, I think, will look like Group Six, I think. And who is the facilit- And who was the facilitator for that one?
Robin.
Robin?
I'm like.
Okay.
Quick picture, small group conversation. We'll come back here and we'll put it all together.
Yeah, at eight oh five, we need to be back in this room. We'll finish at eight and be back here at eight oh five. A question? Do we need the mic?
I don't think so. Are there links available? We can write links, maybe this part is not.
The people online are going to be their own virtual group. So they're going to be in discussion. It's being managed by three people. They're, well, they've got three facilitators.
I've got some that are named Nate.
Okay, well, talk to Nate over here. Great, and anybody who is no longer facilitating a group, like me, go attend another group, and we'll have two facilitators in some cases.
I don't know if I could suggest you could.
Yeah, I will do that. That's a good idea.
It's on the bottom. Sue, I don't know. I don't know whether I facilitate, which is. Good. The matter? Which is here?
This, 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 we're, we're just going to go up. And, great. You know what? That was wonderful. You really did a nice job. I liked it. You know the materials so well, and you just spoke about it beautifully.
Thank you. I'm just being.
Yourself, I know. It was good.
Okay.
It was good.
I think this is, everybody who's in shape, so, while they're rolling, is there somebody who doesn't mind being a bit of a tiny member? I can let you know when I'm starting stuff of these little vibrant loads, if that puts on track, so that, and ask that all come back, you know? To my, to the center of the session, I mean, to join, because everybody's points back into our space.
Does anybody want to hear?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm going to, sorry to have my phone open, perhaps, the breakdown of the schedule for the work, so I can, in terms of time. Okay, so, I'm Andrew Wilson, a member of the Planning Commission, have been there, I think, three years, I guess, probably. And, so, we're going to work on this vision and strategic direction. The first thing I want to do is review our rules of engagement, our best practices here, the way that we're going to keep this all flowing nicely. So, the first one is to be present, and put your phone on silent, and obviously read this off the phone, like I'll go to that. Speakers, keep it short, stay on the topic, and try to add something new to what's being discussed, right? And then, we should all also be active and engaged listeners, and that means, today we're trying to listen to other statements without challenging them, either verbally or in their minds, because the point here is to gather ideas and information from all the different viewpoints and segments and communities that are available. And please remember to try to speak clearly and slowly, you know, all of us have different abilities to hear and concentrate and understand, so that, that way, everybody can try to be part of that, and I'll try to also myself, speak clearly from our children. So, we've, I think, are going to have the, oh, that's what I discovered, the participation guidelines, and then we've got that. Okay, I wasn't sure if on here, we were going to have the strategic vision and direction, but in fact, we've got it in mega screen mode, and you also have it on the back of your computer. So, we're going to take time here for each of you to be able to just read that to yourself. I'm looking to see what we all promise. I think it's five minutes, maybe you can use five minutes to be able to read through that statement, think about it, and remember that what we're looking for is going to be what resonates, what is missing, what would improve this statement, and then we'll regather to talk about your self, where you're trying to take it forward. It's actually the entire, including the vision piece, and then the bullet and points below, all of that to this, this vision, so forth. Take some time, read all of it over, and then we'll, we'll talk about it. I don't want to rush anybody, but I also don't want to leave you just sitting here stewing, your thoughts and folks are clearly ready. We've only been at it for about a minute, so I'll give you more time. If you want to indicate when you're ready for conversation, you can, I'll give us all a little bit more time.
Oh, that's a lot. Yeah.
Is that any better? I've got it right on this, and I thought it'd be easier for me to, or is that my handle on that there? It's in the bright light now. Okay, I'm going to try to listen and strive at the same time. If that turns out to be a poor decision, we might ask somebody else if they're able to do that, but let's see how. So I want to start with hearing from people what resonates, and you don't need to pass the mic around, the online folks are in their own universe at this point, so. Does anybody feel a notion to start us off?
I'm Tom, by the way, I don't know whether.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. You were supposed to do introductions.
I know, I, I don't want to, I wasn't going to say that.
Yeah, you are correct. I was supposed to ask us all to introduce ourselves.
I'm Tom, I'm also on the Putney Conservation Commission, so admittedly, I have a bias here towards conservation. So what resonates with me are Point Four and Five. The idea of climate resilience is number five, and preserving natural resources is number four. Those both are what I work with in the commission. So that, those are the things that are most important to me, even though the other things are completely different. That's my passion.
I'm Ryan, and I'm on the Putney Mountains, which is really, so, I'm a who, but I'm also very concerned about the housing.
I recognize that even though this is a long statement, it's also dense, which makes it even harder to absorb in this town to.
So, I'm Melanie, and I'm on the, this has caused some community forms that were working on the village, so this is kind of, you know, segwaying together. There's a lot of, hopefully, from, I think, they are, but what I'm very interested in is our building, and bringing it back to life again, because we have some pretty rough times, and fires, and, and limits, and our buildings are not looking so hot, and we are green, that it's very lighting, so I'm really interested in revitalization of our town center, out to a certain distance that we never really determined, but we'll extract to our center. And I like the vision, I think it's a good vision to strive for, I think we have, that we have these golds underneath it, or it's off the board.
I would like, I would like to work on something towards interconnectedness with neighborhoods. This is kind of a poignant point for me, because I have a state highway that's down near the center of my neighborhood, you know, I couldn't ask for better neighbors to have, but, it's, it's taking one's life, and it has, it would not drive it to get something else, so I, I think so is a way of having a, kind of, larger, wider, of, of, of connections.
Is there a piece of this vision as it's written that resonates for that? Because we'll, we'll also later on have an opportunity for you to talk about what's missing, but I'm wondering if there's a piece of that sense of interconnectedness you're looking for, that this does manage to capture.
I'm interested in a lot of the connectives, often all day. But I'm also saying, we didn't have this, more interconnected, there, right, words, to facilitate actual community, maybe.
It's been about five minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kai. Before I move on from what resonates, Ogie and David, I would love to give you an opportunity.
I think you have to understand, based on our time, if they did natural numbers take, how can we deal with the very important things, because that, if, all the rest of that, very important, we do, we're on team, so that we cannot say anything.
Yeah, so talking about the natural landscape, or how it is inescapable underpinning of everything else that happens in that, and I believe you are a member of our plan for our conservation, is that, yeah, which means it's really.
Because I think you always think of things that you, that you do, and you really challenge one topics, to, to base it on that, how to think about the, the issue we have, to, it's good, I think, a great contributor, after being.
Yeah. So, I'm going to say that conserving resources resonates with you, but I think you have a broader vision that might fall into that, the next piece of, but we'll let David.
I'm Jacob Eggleston. It almost all resonates with me, what I particularly, two things that are particularly in mind are sort of suggested that maybe, like, the, emphasis, it's a, in, in creating a local economy, I'm looking, I would hope that that would involve some new production happening, not just new stores with retail stuff from all over the place, something that could last even if supply chains break down, due to diseases, or climate change, or whatever, so, and then, along with that, water is a major concern of mine, although one, it's really good, it's destroying stuff that we create, but two, all life depends on, and so, being smart about water, to me, is really basic to achieving this, about all of this. If we need to grow food, we need water for the crops, if we need animals, if we need, and so, there may be interventions that could be done at high elevations, slow down water, get it into the ground, or get it into reservoirs, or, you know, something so that it's useful to cut the nuts, and.
Oh, well, I don't, I would rather. So if it's okay, I've moved on to what is missing, and I'm trying to fill in things I heard from the last section, and then. I don't know if interconnectedness is a real word, but it is at the moment. So, from Steve, language of actual facilitation of interconnectedness, so, we've got some stuff in there about increasing community-wide connectedness, but this notion of binding together what can feel like desperate neighborhoods, or, I might add that, finding, good thing. From Ogie, the notion that the landscape is this unavoidable context for everything else, which we definitely talk in this about, you know, natural resources, but really don't address that, is, it's comment about water security being an important topic for life in town, and local production. So, what other items are we missing that individuals would like to draw on here? We'll put five minutes onto this as well. We started ahead of time, so I think we should be okay, we ran over, and then we can.
I, I. I, I love being on the dunes. And I know there's a boat, I mean, but it's, it's not a very, uh, conducive to anything. I think, uh, uh, popping a boat in water and, you know, being off.
Yeah.
There was, uh, at this, you know, it's, it's an amazing resource and it just, it just flows by and there's not really much other access to it at the start.
Yeah, for such a huge element that passes by town, it's no, it's nowhere on there.
You can't take your lunch there and sit down and just enjoy it, just watch it here.
Uh, there are, uh, regulations, like fishing, water, wildlife, that I've had people come and say with me about kids out there because they're not fully covered. And now, and, and the state is in control of, uh, water damage.
Yeah.
Which I think we should change. We have to act as well.
It's also our, it's also our only, um, not exactly the only, there is a section of Suckitt's Brook, I believe, that our, uh, FEMA flood hazard areas, the Connecticut River is one of the only federal flood hazard areas we have in the town of Puntner, which also has its own barriers and hurdles in terms of what can or can't be constructed or, or, but, um, I think, yeah. It's definitely not a resource. It's called out in this vision. Are there other?
Transportation, public transportation, with the, next, several issues within here, uh, next that needs. And this is trans- public transportation, inter-town transportation and between-town transportation.
Inter-intra.
Yeah. Oops. Yeah, my entries and my intros flit with my whippings and crosses, but the idea is that.
Something we have only to, uh, four stairs, you know, coming up.
Yeah.
Only to, it's, this very, I don't know, I can't even, uh, you know, it's a law, it's, uh, no, I.
Anyway, I think, I'm not sure what I think like this, but I think education, um, just on all of these things, like, some people are working very individually in small places, but to create more interconnectedness, to have more community education and hand on, you know, like, learning about the beavers down at Sand Hill, how they actually are good. I know some people don't like them, but they do slow the water down. They do create a few system, um, with plants and wildlife and the weapons and, um, the water for the town, you know, that's more seven. There's just, there's a lot of things, I think, like what you're all talking about, if we could have more things that, like events or educational opportunities where people can really come and learn. Kids can learn about this too. Kind of leaving out the kids who are in the closet. They don't have a lot to do here. So, um, I'd also see more without you to, uh, be part of this, you know, process. At least in the forums, I feel like they're missing in our forums, that can have always been like, do they want to skate park? Do they want a park? Do they want, you know, what is there left to do?
Yeah.
So education and then, kind of, how do I say that? It's getting hard to articulate, uh, but just education of, it's just, of all of the things that are happening, that we should, our concerns, our loves, our, creating community, that we all agree, uh, goals that we gather and, and just celebrate this, because we have this really beautiful place. And the other town forests, that's incredible. We're, we're focusing on, on the natural, I think, because I think in spirit, I'm a Christian, but I do live in the, I would like to, you know, the idea of moving around, um, paper. Absolutely. No, every, yeah, I think everything has.
Yeah, right. It's one of our largest contributors, as I understand it, and, you know, there's very few of us interface with it. Um, by the way, Sue knows that I am a sucker for sweets and she's placed these, big with cookies, right underneath her easel. Um, you're all welcome to, uh, interrupt and come grab them. I don't want them to be exclusive.
She wants you to keep your energy up.
Oh, yeah.
So, I just, I'm just.
Okay. Um, um. What time is it? Is it?
Nine is it? Twenty.
Okay. So I think we're gonna be, um, inundated. Is there anything that falls into the category for people here of what would improve this statement?
I'm not sure if it will, kind of, get seen, but I wish those were the go-to place to blow their own tea out of interest to all of us here in Puntner. You know, the official bulletin boards, but, um, if there was something, if there was, like, a calendar to fix, but, but I'm a little bit skeptical, so.
Yeah. It's not, it's such a tough place.
Yeah.
How we feel.
Members of our community are using sort of small disparate forums to have conversation, but a central place for that. And there have been plenty of conversations, I've heard around town about improving the website presence that the town of Puntner has. And how could that be a better resource and easier to navigate and easier to find information on it? Um, so, uh, I also think that maybe this topic is something that could come into a vision, um. I like, I like the ideas back there. Make the next one better. Um, I think a lot of what is missing, ones on this page too, the fact that we felt there was a gap or any gaps. Yeah. Improving it would be filling gaps. Right. It's hard to turn that off. Yeah, that's, I think, the, the notion of this question is to, um, make sure that we're trying to capture a sentiment that folks felt like they didn't have a place to, to voice. So the, the last.
Before you do that.
Yep.
Um, just being part of the community forums that we're discussing, what will they try, um, to, to highlight is the first sentence, we're so safe and resilient. Um, there were people who voiced not feeling safe in the village, but there's no lighting, they feel nervous at night. Um, there was a lot of awaken in the last few months, um, and so we were talking about what can we do to increase people feeling safer in the village. Definitely to continue to grow more housing. So I, I was, somebody, I, I think you're thirty, four, thirty-five years old, but there was some, at one point there was a police car that Puntner had, that had like a fake person or a dog or something, and they could move it around and go in different places, because we don't know very much about the presence. But it would, it would create a little sense of safety, I think, you know, to just have a car that could move around, or even people would be less likely to break into places. I don't know.
I always think it's interesting, the sheriff seems to roll through town on sort of these, the, the sheriff will be around a lot all at once. But they seem mostly interested in speed enforcement.
Well, and people, they, you know.
And so they hide their car.
It was, it was, um, published what time they quit.
Okay.
Which was not a good supplement.
Which may be a matter of public, might be a matter of public record, yeah. But I always think it's interesting that they hide their car, right? Because they think their job is speed enforcement, so they're like in the shadows in a black car. I don't know if anybody else knows, Windham County Sheriff went to black vehicles. Which I think is a, anyway, this is not, as a planning commission member, but as a private citizen, um, I think the move away from brightly colored inviting police cars to like blacked-out stealthy police cars says a lot about a change in how we view public safety servants in our nation. Yeah. Yeah. But that's a topic of, um, okay, one thing that we've been asked to do, yes.
To the improvement. Uh, this is, uh, said already, but I think that Puntner has a, a large pool of human resources with people who know all sorts of things, you know, and places where people can get together and share things. We've, we've got other education, I mean, I mean, it's not just Puntner Central, but there's, the Greenwood School, the, like, the Grammar School.
Langmarck College, yeah, yeah.
And, and people who know things and they don't think that people share them as much as, as they possibly could. You know, you do a lot of stuff, Andrew, that I, that I do, but, you know, or, or I do, because, you know, we've been in education. And you mentioned that we'd like to be able to, to be, uh, people about what's going on, people want to be interested in stuff about the world. People are very, uh, for our history of the town. There's bits of people here and there, but I think there'd be a lot more interest. People say, hey, let's have a, you know, a, a talk about the history of Puntner and this, that, could this be a, or this be a this, or, or, or the Wilson Wettman, you know, his, his, yeah, Wettman. That, that, that Wettman there is a particularly really interesting place and there's a lot going on there. And probably people don't even know that there's a huge survey going on right now that's been commissioned.
In, in the wetland?
Yes, by the Puntner Conservation Commission. They have a huge grant and they are working towards, they're improving flood regains in that area. And they're gonna come up with some suggestions for that. Not that you know we've got. Now, right, it's like, uh, professionally approved from a north, uh, company from Vermont, I think.
Yes, yeah.
And so, I, I don't know how you would get that one.
Yeah, I'm gonna put information sharing here, but.
Not just in one central location, but, you know, more broadly.
Right. But I also put, um, recognize and share more of our community members' skills. You brought up educational knowledge and skills, but we also have talented artists and talented woodworkers. And, like, there's all sorts of individuals within our community who run businesses based upon lifelong learned skills and.
Creating that sense of place where.
Yeah.
Well, if there, if there was money, uh, grants available, um, um, a person, uh, could, could allocate a lot of information that we could send. It's kind of, I'm just trying to picture how, how it's happening, uh, but it would be great to have a, an online book of lore about the town. And, and what places that are worth seeing and shortcuts for here, for there, and, and just make it, make it more vibrant. But I think it would be, um, steerhand by, for what person to, to allocate, uh, more people often do that. But that's a, that's a lot of advice to do, when, with a grant, it would be worth somebody's money, I think, really. I think that would, uh, really make the town more focused.
Yeah, so a document that maybe starts with something along the lines of what the historical society might have in terms of history, but it would be more of a living document that would talk about history and mo- modern theories, yeah.
Like the trail of Russian and, and, uh, today.
Yes, well, something, something like that, and I think there's, and we added, so, uh, I'm, I'm right between the two, two, two officials, semi. Private doctor, um, but on the other hand, the other part, I believe, is people are always afraid of insurance issues. I have buildings, overhead on this, uh, insurance risks, um, that, that is sort of the most natural solution, active construction, teachers.
The place that I have seen a document like this is, my wife's family has a lot of members who live on Shabig Island in Maine. And as an island community, they have a book for po- folks moving to the island community. That has not just like lore and history of the island community, but useful things like, um, where do people go grocery shopping? Or how do they acquire their food? Where do you go to get gasoline for your boat? Who do you, you know, hire to get construction materials onto the island? That sort of thing that as a, a new member of the community would take you forever knocking on doors to find out. And somebody has put it all into a single document. And we're not an island per se, but I get the sense that's what, something that you're talking about, yeah. Yeah.
Andrew, it's Kenner.
Okay. Um, it seems like everybody else must be as behind as we are, cause they haven't come charging into the room. Uh, a task we were supposed to undertake was, um, yeah, please, um. Yeah.
The one thing, the way that I came, uh, moved in Puntner, you know, with, uh, the, uh, I didn't know if how town governance, if what kind of, or, uh, how to, uh, as a, and, uh, that kind of contact that I did from the, connection. Not that the individual, but the, uh, how it's, like, and what opportunity to, uh, that.
So an introduction to town structure and governance.
That could be included all the, like, uh, no, okay, yeah.
Which, as a member of the planning commission, this is a, an opportunity to plug that I know that our commission and many others in town are not at our full capacity for town governance. Um, and maybe it's because of how time commitment there is and when we need and all that other stuff. But it's also maybe because people within the community aren't as informed about the structure of town governance and how.
When you knew it should come and, uh, what you don't, how to, you know, and that could be helpful if you can find out something that has to do with, and you would like the, and, uh, because if you kick downtown, uh, to, to more housing and more people, we did that, and we should, we need to allow it to, we need to, into the community. Otherwise, uh, many, all the program, the, uh, uh, we.
That in some ways connects to this in my mind, because, um.
Yeah, it's about, kind of, action, uh, the, uh, the, it's not, it's not just to achieve, you know, it's, it's, it's how it works.
Both of these speak to me about, uh, invitation, intake of members into our community and how we get them plugged in and involved. We're supposed to highlight the priorities, um, things that, uh, resonated for folks or missing. And I thought that I was gonna have stickies here, so people can put stickies on things that, but maybe we can, um, I'll just have the marker here. And individuals can take a moment. We don't have so many of these that I think they're gonna get lost in a wash of other options. But if people wanna grab the marker, grab a cookie and, um, stick sort of a, a plus sign next to the. next to the ones that, that, um, resonated with you.
The ones or the ones?
Ones, yeah, you're welcome to have multiples. But I think this will, you know, if there's like three plus signs here, and five plus signs here, and two plus signs here, it'll give us a sense of where interest and pressure lies. I'm gonna leave the marker there and step back out of the way and take a cookie.
Just one?
Just one, there's something number three for the next one.
Oh, I see. I would, uh, just my own commentary, um, I was on three, hundred fifty years, beginning of time project. The one was, uh, started by this, uh, adult citizen, which, uh, was in ministry. And they created a lot of projects, they got a lot of time. And then the town, the department, they basically needed to get into, uh, something like this. And it was, and that, and, and it was such paperwork and, um, ungraspable projects. And, but it was hard to keep a quorum, like just three members. Uh, but just, it's kind of, so then, there, there needs to be a talent, and, and, and enthusiasm. I might, well, uh, this is the, uh, an observation, that the word enthusiasm comes from a degree in phares. This is, it's like a person who has enthusiasm, enthusiasm for phares has, I'm sure, a godlike form. And, you know, that's what we want to do, you know, I don't wanna be a god, but I'd love to have that quality, but, you know, this is not true. You can all be like gods.
No.
I, I'm just saying, you know, I know, but that's, it could still.
You're right.
I think we need that, um, we need that, we also made a connection to, he said, that's a nice, real friendly, real.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. You're welcome to do that, yes, if that's. Well, um, that's, that's okay, ones are fine, we can do a tally.
Well, I suppose you do like a number one?
No, 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 I could teach you all dot tally, which is my favorite.
I didn't wanna do all of them.
Um, I would note that I suspect what happened was, if a group of citizens are making decisions, then they're supposed to sort of adhere to being publicly, publicly accessible and part of open meeting law and all of this stuff, yeah. And I can tell you that open meeting law, as important as it is, is one of the most frustrating things I've ever bumped up against, but like. The open meeting law is the laws that dictate how, um, assemblies of the public can make decisions.
Oh, by, thank you.
So like, planning commission can make decisions, yeah. So as Pip noted, to write a joint document like this, all of the decisions need to be publicly attendable and viewable. So the planning commission can't sit down in a room together and talk about language choices and other things without it being, it being a warned, publicly available meeting. Um, which is important, but also, if you're trying to ever jointly write a document, is like possibly the most frustrating thing anybody's ever pulled me through.
You can go too far.
Yeah, but I think it also is probably what stifles small groups of citizens from starting to work on changes that end up affecting the entire town. And they're enthusiastic about it, and they're coming up with brilliant ideas, and that's wonderful, but then you run into the need for it to be like, I think we're all set.
Question, were you guys doing stickies, or are we supposed to all come together and do stickies at the end?
I, we just, I didn't, I found out I didn't have stickies, so we just put some like.
I know, I put some over there for you, they were on the other side of the speaker.
Oh, we just did some tick marks, and we did them right now, so, yeah.
All right, well.
Um, they're on the other side of the speaker.
I'm sorry, I, 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 can we add, can we add from the last one, water, water access?
Hmm, yes.
If you were talking more than.
Access of water.
Well, yeah, yes, and access to.
Water, and, and.
And access not just meaning recreation, but water as a resource that needs to be thought of, planned for.
I mean, one way to solve Riverside is to say that it's not just a rural community, there's Riverside in the vision.
Yes.
It brings it up to the part. Add that word to that sentence. The, the, not that we're gonna participate, and then looking at the vision, where it's such a zillion rural community. I could also say Riverside, or I can say Riverside instead of Riverside, as well.
And although we can't always assume will be rural forever, I think it's an important part of who we are.
Huh, that's interesting.
We have three easels up here. Do we want to try to put things on easels as opposed to walls?
I was gonna try to put them on the walls because, um, I think three easels will move them together.
Okay.
It can be quicker, I think.
Okay.
If you have people standing, but they're... I think that's... 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 I'm pretty sure that's really what I'm...
I was thinking about it. I must have. I was thinking about it. 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 Okay, so, so he goes checking the... So, my thought is, when you look at this, you know, you have quite a lot of, um, scattered... My thought like... Yeah, it seems like there's everything gone...
Got it done. Yeah, so, so he looks for like four dots or something like that. Anyway.
I'm just... FYI, I'm gonna take all of those and try to put, put them together the way BCRB does.
Yeah, but I also, um, it looks like it'll probably hang them on the wall.
Yep. No, I just mean for after. As many people as know the better. Yep.
We wanna... We may need to think of a technical solution for this.
What technical solution do you need looking for? Oh, how to get these off of here?
No, that part, um, how to display them.
Um, well, I was...
You know, if we had had seven breakout groups...
This would have been impossible.
Not with three each.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't put them up. We would just have people report from them.
Right.
What happens if we put on here?
Uh, I don't think I would do that without asking the folks who own the screen.
You're probably right about that. In case they have a feeling about that.
Yeah.
Let's put these down low. I mean, putting them high is too hard.
Does, does everybody here have a post, uh, meeting survey?
Yes.
And if...
It's too dark to read it.
And if it's too, uh...
I was asking them if they're...
If there's not enough time to fill them out, you can also drop them off at town hall. And they'll stand by.
Where's the microphone? We gotta get them out.
On top of... Pretty organic. Okay, that's so helpful.
There's, you know, us.
Great, here's, uh... We take this one 'cause it's wireless. And then you've got one of those two wireless ones.
So, are there two wireless ones now?
Two wireless.
Oh, now we have two wireless ones.
Is the survey on an online format that we sent over to them?
Yes, it's actually, um, at that last one.
Okay, I'll tell them to check in on the bus.
Just a quick announcement, the lights are turned up as bright as they go. It's definitely a space designed for mood and not for reading and writing, so I apologize. This is as good as it gets, yeah. And I saw that Laura brought her own flashlight and maybe others might consider that for future meetings.
But there are cookies.
And if all else fails, a lot of your folks have a flashlight.
But it's nice to see the people, too. Do you have this around?
Okay, I think, um, so that we can truly wrap up by eight-thirty tonight, um, and thank you all for being here. We're going to have a brief presentation of what, uh, people's, uh, people were saying with a focus on what's, what feedback was most important. Um, we're gonna look at all of it. We're gonna have all of this recorded and, and sent out and we'll be poring over it. Um, but here we just wanna get sort of a quick hits about what mattered most in each group. Um, and we'll can build on each group's presentation. If there's something additional, the next group can, can build on, here's what mattered to us. So Vanessa, do you wanna start? You are group number one. Do you feel ready or do you need to, do you need to think about it? You wanna pass and go second? You'll go second. Eileen, I think you've been thinking about this. Yes. Yes, you do need a mic.
Okay, hello, okay. Um, should I just go over, ca- can the online people see over here?
They may not be able to see, but most importantly, they need to hear you. What they can see is me on the, on the stage, 'cause that's where the...
Okay.
Um, so, no, we can't move the camera over to you, so your voice will do the work.
All right, so, um, so our group, um, had a lot of great ideas, um, and, um, when it came down to, uh, sticky note time, um, we felt that the most important thing that was missing in the, um, vision statement was a focus on the village does not include the full town. Um, so maybe better definition on that. Um, and then, uh, one thing they felt was missing was, um, creativity as an attribute. And then the other things that received stickies was how to realize the vision in strategic direction, uh, and the word welcoming adding to the vision. So what, uh, what resonated? And I may be doing these, this backwards actually, but whatever. Um, so, uh, what resonated for us the most was the concept of connectedness. Um, and, um, we felt that the statement was welcoming to visitors. And those were the most dots on there. There's a few others that have dots, um, mostly having to do with environmental protection and, um, and climate change. Um, and then what would improve it? We got a lot of dots on, uh, definitions of, some people felt that sustainable village was not really well divi- defined. And, um, what are the needs to be met? That's in the, uh, the housing piece, I believe. Um, and the word harmony was not well-defined. And then, um, under, um, under vision, uh, the vision statement itself, the first sentence, um, the most, um, the most weight on what would improve that sentence was use community in the vision and the village, uh, wider community in the, in the vision and the village, so the wider community and the village. So those were the two things that stood out for us on that. Are, are we taking questions or we're not?
No, I think, oh, sorry, that was loud. I, I think, um, we're, we're gonna move on to the next one and maybe we can have a couple of questions at the end, but we're, we're gonna run out of time and we have a couple of other groups. Uh, so, uh, let's see, Robin is ready to go.
Thank you. So, uh, on, on, uh, what was missing, uh, one of the things that got a lot of dots, more than anything else on, on any of these, uh, was, uh, people in our group would like to see some mention of diversity in the housing stock. Uh, we also talked about diversity, welcoming a diverse population into Putney, but specifically people wanted to see diversity in housing stock. Uh, an emphasis on building as many different types of housing as, as possible. And then, uh, moving down to, uh, what would improve it? There were some questions about the language, uh, the use of the word mitigate in, in the context, some people found confusing. Um, and people would like to see, i- i- in my group wanted to see some kind of statement about a green contract to include, uh, net-zero, uh, uh, carbon, uh, emissions or, I'm not sure.
Net-zero and carbon neutral is a goal for the utilization of any, um, affordable housing.
Okay, remember, people can't hear you online, so, um, and trying to bear in mind that this was a vision statement, I think that there was some language in it about that, but people wanted something that was a bit more specific. Some other things got dots. Uh, one, one really interesting suggestion was to lead with number three on, uh, the, the third statement in the vision statement. Uh, Roberta in our group felt that everything else kind of flowed from that, and I thought that was a very interesting comment. Um, I, I don't have it in front of me. Yep. Thank you. Uh, for those of you online, number three, the third statement refers to community-wide, uh, connectedness, connectivity. All right, and then, uh, let's see, what really resonated for people, I'm sorry, I probably should have started with this. Um, addressing climate change, um, community connectedness, and, um, people did want to see maybe a little bit more about thriving businesses, but they liked what was there.
Thank you, Robin. Nice presentation, and you also did a nice job as well, Eileen. Um, we're gonna, we have two more groups to go to, so Vanessa will ask you to present. Do you need help, um, putting this up? I think I, I was worried not to do that. I tried to do that and I was told not to do that. Yeah. Okay, and then after that, we'll hear, uh, from Nate to provide a summary about the online participants, but let's, let's get this organized. Okay, sure.
I think I'm turned on. There we go. All right, so what resonated with my group? There were a lot of, uh, coalition around the phrasing for climate resilience and conserving resources. Um, and then I'm gonna piggyback off of that. There was an, a, a special emphasis on water as a critical resource, um, both in terms of drinking and farming and the, um, the need for water is, you know, inherent to life. Um, and then there was a lot of emphasis on the community connectedness, uh, pieces of the vision statement. And then others that got mentioned were, um, village center with phrases like liveliness, revitalization, inviting place, then local economy, and, uh, lastly was housing. I'm gonna bump over here 'cause that's where the rest of my stuff is. Um, and then what's missing? We may have gotten a little far afield from the language of the vision statement here, but, um, whether or not it's in vision statement or otherwise, um, the thing that got the, the most attention was, uh, this idea of, um, tapping into available community resources and providing the community with opportunities for education and outreach. And that seemed to span a really wide spectrum of not just, um, topics in particular like, um, you know, natural resource topics, but also spilled over into things like what grants are happening in town and what activities and, um, yeah, all of that stuff. Next up was, uh, language about not just, uh, i- interconnectedness between the sort of various neighborhoods of Putney. It felt like that language wasn't there, and I think that might piggyback into what was said about, um, there was this comment, uh, which kind of goes along with the notion that maybe we should headline with topic number three about interconnectedness. There was a content, a comment that the landscape is really the context in which all of Putney exists, and maybe that should be the foundational phrase on, on the vision statement, is that landscape is that sort of underpinning context for everything. Um, and then what would improve it? Uh, we didn't get to dots over here and, um, these really started going, uh, far afield from what would improve the vision statement to what might improve Putney as a community in general. And so I'm gonna, in the notion of keeping things on time, um, this'll all get compiled and you can read it, but I'm gonna pass this to Vanessa.
Thank you, Andrew.
Fantastic, thanks. Uh, well, we had a, a nice chat, and if anyone who was in there, you know, if I seem to go astray from your understanding of what we talked about, feel free to, to jump in. Um, we, uh, we kind of jumped very quickly into what is missing. Um, and I think it, it really echoes a lot of, uh, of what everybody else has been saying tonight, was really, uh, that sense of, of connection, of interconnectivity, not online connectivity, but person-to-person, community, community, group-to-group connectivity. Um, a great line that came up was that Putney is a community that is, uh, a community that is always working and being a community. That's right, it was pronounced, it's so good. Um, and so really seeking connection between the smaller diverse groups, um, that everybody tends to be a bit far afield and doing their own thing, and it's very hard to, to kind of understand what we mean by community when that community is kind of spread out and, uh, you know, it's kind of the nature of a rural community in general, but that there are a lot of pockets and how do we, how do we bring all of the pockets and all of the different aspects of, uh, of the town together um, in a really connected and, uh, kind of this idea of, I, I think, uh, as in a general sense, mutual aid, uh, which came up, you know, in terms of, of safety, um, in terms of, um, that strengthening those connections kind of serves a lot of the, the broader, um, things that we're looking for. Uh, food security, uh, was, is missing. Welcoming as a word, I know that came up in another group, too, was missing as a concept, a word specifically. Um, and let's see, what would improve, ways to recognize and support some of the more, uh, the unseen and unheard, uh, residents in town, uh, a greater emphasis on the natural environment and biodiversity, uh, kind of, I think, I don't know if it was that number three or not, but again, kind of pulling that into the overarching vision statement and not a, a sub-piece of it. Uh, the use of the word sustainable was problematic and, uh, suggestions around, you know, resilient, uh, responsive, resourceful, and even responsible to each other and to the ecosystem. And then we kind of did a quick, uh, survey of what are your, you know, kind of priorities and then voted on those, and it looks like, uh, food security and accessible housing were the top two, followed by, uh, community and connectedness. Again, not wireless connectivity, but human connectivity. Um, and preserve and expand the natural landscape, that that was missing, that we have, you know, kind of preserved, but we actually should be looking at expanding the landscape and biodiversity, then climate change, resilience and preparedness, and, um, in the end, uh, reducing pollu- pollution and greenhouse, uh, gas emissions. So food security and accessible housing way up there and consistently throughout, community, connection.
Thank you, Vanessa. Well, what a rich conversation there as well, super. Finally, Nate, and I just wanna give a lot of thanks to the, uh, online team here. It's taken four people really to put their heads together to try to engage those online, uh, trying something new, and we have something to report from it, so go for it, and here.
Thank you, Sue. Ooh, jeez. Um, so for the first question, what about these statements resonate? Um, a few people seem to agree that the last sentence of the vision statement, um, seems to capture how the essence of how we wanna live here and why we are here. Um, where, uh, other people thought that diversity of all kinds, including economic diversity, uh, was good. Uh, something that did not resonate, it seems, was, uh, people felt that resilient wasn't exactly the right word to use. Somebody suggested vibrant would be appropriate to replace. For things that were missing, uh, there was no mention of a vibrant, attractive village in the vision, another important issue in the forums. Uh, that, that was the only thing that got more than one, you know, uh, person contributing to that, saying that that was very important to them. But for what would improve the vision, um, we had a few people say that I think welcomingness is key. Um, and then also, it seemed that there was concern about public safety or policing. They didn't see enough of that, like, safe was in the vision statement, yet they didn't see it reflected in the priorities.
Thank you, Nate. That's very helpful. So again, very helpful, rich, I'm gonna stand over here, so the light's not in my eyes. Uh, set of feedback, thank you, Colin, um, uh, to guide the, the planning commission. We'll look at all of it. Um, as we wrap up this meeting, I wanna remind you that you were, had the opportunity to take a meeting survey at the very beginning. Not only do we need your feedback about this meeting, but there's a place to provide further comment if you want to, you can use the back of the page. Um, but we do need it back. It has instructions. If you, there's boxes here that look like this, that you can put it in before you go, some upstairs and some downstairs. If you choose to take it with you, there's actually instructions of where to mail it, um, so that you could do that. You also can provide further feedback online at the PlaceSense 2023 Town Plan webpage. There's a box there where you can provide comments. Um, if you didn't get a copy of the survey, uh, online, you, and you can't find it online, it should be there, but it's a little tricky to find. Um, you can put a comment there saying, please send to me the survey. Um, we had a little bit trying to get it out, uh, online to everybody. But, um, we do need your feedback and look forward to that. Um, I want to thank Next Stage again for hosting us today, um, and Colin, who's been up here, uh, taking care of the AV, thank you. Um, and I wanna thank our, uh, meeting facilitators, those who, uh, showed up in addition to the planning commission. Thank you, you know, Nate and Dak and Mike and, um, Eileen and who else was extra? I think that's most everybody. And to Benji, who is our landmark college student, has been providing logistical support for today. Um, thank you all for coming and joining us, and please come to the future meetings and bring other neighbors with you.
Uh, the next meeting, uh, scheduled at the end of this month, the twenty-ninth, is, uh, housing, transportation, and energy.
If everybody here brings or tells three, five, ten more community members, um, it would be wonderful, right? Like, let's increase the community support. You all found the notice, made it here tonight, so help others to find the notices for these future meetings and find their way here tonight or in those nights. Greeno?
March twenty-ninth is a Wednesday?
Yeah, I believe they are generally Wednesday.
There's, they're Wednesdays and Thursdays. We went to, this next one is a Wednesday.
Same time?
Same time, same place. We've reserved Next Stage for six-thirty to eight-thirty on the dates that I showed you earlier. Um, so, and those will be published, and this, this slide deck shows those dates now, so that's our current plan. I will say, if you all suggest that this is really not the best time to do it, we're gonna rethink it. So I don't wanna say that it's completely set, but we've reserved this and that's what our plan is. But if a different meeting time and, and format, um, is what comes through on the surveys, we'll give that a lot of thought, too. But that's our current plan. Um, and if you haven't signed up yet to get email notices, um, you can do that again at PlaceSense. We also have lists, uh, downstairs where you can sign up to receive emails, not only from the planning commission, but also from the town. We're helping the town build its first email list for notices. Uh, so in signing up for that, you'll sign up for Planning Commission and the town. So, thank you. Uh, anything else, Vanessa?
Well, just on that note, uh, with, with all the talk of, of trying to build community and communication amongst residents, um, and different groups, uh, this, uh, this effort to get a, uh, an email, you know, mailing list together for town hall is, is really an important one. So please do find that signup sheet, add your email, even your phone number, uh, you know, phone trees, and please encourage other people to, to sign up and give their email info so that we can get nice communication going.
We, we especially like it when you sign up on the PlaceSense website because you'll, we'll get the right, the correct spelling, but, um, you can certainly sign up here on the paper. Just print clearly. Question?
I, I have a, a suggestion. I don't know if there are, um, if there's grant money available in this state, um, but I think it would be well-spent if somebody were to put together...